I would make justice to fly of the United States of America and to the quality for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Can we start with a roll call, please?
Yes, Christie?
Yeah.
Deacon?
Here.
Gaba is excused, Gardner?
Here.
Carmelo is excused, Thomas?
Here.
And Watson?
Here.
Minutes of the last meeting, so we're gonna look for an approval, a motion to approve the March eighth Town Council meeting and the March fifteenth special joint Town Council and Budget Committee meetings on the fifteenth.
I move to accept both sets of minutes.
Second.
All in favor of accepting those minutes, unanimous. Any petitions and communications this evening?
Uh, there are none.
Port of the town manager?
There is none.
Public hearings this evening. Again, for the dangers, uh, dangerous building, uh, three seventy-nine Bonnie Eagle Road. AP?
You want to present it now or during your order?
Um, read the order, then you can present. Port, come on up, come, come present now.
Good evening, J, and it's Paul the Code Enforcement Officer. Um, in front of you, you have a packet, uh, three seventy-nine Bonnie Eagle Road. Uh, map, six lot sixty-nine, uh, Linda Walker is the owner, the building was built in nineteen, uh, eighteen eighty. Uh, currently, it's in disarray, um, it's falling apart. The support structures are rotted out, um, there's photographs, uh, exhibits one through fourteen, if you wanna go with those. State statue allows towns to declare insecure buildings that they deem dangerous. And on to that statue, there's six items, and we only have to meet one of them. Uh, the first one is a structurally unsafe. Uh, that building is very unsafe, if you look at the photographs, the bearing walls have holes in them. A lot of the sill is rotted away, uh, the roof has holes in it. Uh, the second item is unstable, there again, with the condition of the building that meets that criteria, unsanitary. Um, as you can see in the photographs, outside, there's numerous piles of trash. Uh, this fall was human waste in the driveway, um, a couple times. And if you look at some of the photographs, throughout, you can see inside, uh, they're stacked up above the windows, boxes and debris is stacked up above. Uh, we're not sure, some of those is the second floor on top of the first floor. Um, cause we have not been able to get into the building, and not that we can't get in the building, it's we will not go into the building because of the, uh, structurally unsafe. One of the other can, uh, things we need to hit is it constitutes a fire hazard. Uh, as the photos demonstrate, uh, that will not take long to go up if it ever catches on fire. The other ball is unsuitable and improper for occupancy, uh, right now, the way the condition of the building is. Uh, she has not lived there for at least five years and possibly up to ten years, so there's nobody living in it. Human wise, I'm sure there's many, uh, animals inside, we see, we've got reports of people watching birds and other animals flying and how the structure through the holes, so I'm sure there's some infestation of some type of animals inside. Uh, also, the last thing that the state statue requires is, does it constitute a hazard to health and safety? That's pretty self-explanatory, um, if you know the property, and if you look at the photographs. Um, to determine, one of those six items that we need to meet is inadequate maintenance, obviously, that hasn't been taken care of for over at least five years. Abandonment and a couple of other things. We've dealt with Ms. Walker for over twelve years, um, she's had twelve notices of violations to clean up the property, starting in April of two thousand and five was her first notice. And the last notice was this past fall, when I gave her another notice to clean up. Uh, she'll do a couple totes at a time, and then it'll go another year or so without being cleaned up. Um, at this time, the building is far deteriorate, too much deteriorated to even, uh, not rehab it and, and make it into a livable space, so right now, under pedal seventeen, chapter ninety-one, section, subsection twenty-eight fifty-one for dangerous buildings, I'm requesting the town declares that as a dangerous building. Uh, also, just to note, we got an email today from Ms. Walker's real, realtor. The property is under contract, um, they have a buyer, and, and the documents of the sell, sales agreement, the buyer is responsible, gonna take the building down, um, but they're not gonna have a closing until May ninth. Um, so we'd like to still go ahead with this process. Um, when the new owner takes over, we will be glad to work with them, to come, come up with a timeframe of when is acceptable for the town and then to have it removed. So, at this time, I'm requesting that the council votes in favor of that.
Sorry to interject, JP, do you mind reading that statement?
Yep.
I was asked to, okay.
The property located at three seventy-nine Bonnie Eagle Road, owned by Linda Walker, has been listed for sale. Offers been made on the property and is currently under contract to be conveyed to the new owner on or before May ninth twenty, twenty-five. It has been expressly acknowledged by the buyer that the house is going to be torn down, and the buyer will be working with the town on the rebuild. The current owner requests that the town allow time to see this transaction to be completed. I did talk to the town attorney this morning, uh, once I got this email, he suggests that we still move forward with this proceeding. Uh, because even after tonight, if you vote in favor of it, they have the, owner has thirty days to appeal it. Um, and that will get us into the, the May ninth area. Um, and then we can still work with the owner on taking it down after that. Our goal is not to, for the town to take it down, but we'd, we'd like the order that it will be removed.
Any questions for JP? Great, thank you, is there anybody else in the public that wants to come up and, and talk about this building? Open up for the rest of the public hearing.
Thank you, my grandchildren have, uh, Susan Watson, two twenty-dollar Ford, Standish. My grandchildren have ridden on the bus past that place for for years and always said, Grammy, why don't, why don't they take it down, that is my question. Why did Standish wait so long, because I have here that main law states that municipal code officer may order the disposal of dangerous buildings for so anyway, you all know that, but it's just, do we need a new, do we need an ordinance in the town so that things get done sooner? Uh, cause it has certainly been an ISO for a long, long time. And I, uh, I hope that you have researched that the realtor has a buyer. And that that is, that is fact. Cause that sign went up as soon as they learned that it was gonna be dismantled. So anyway, I just the town doesn't work fast enough, I don't think, so, and I live on the Dollar Ford, and I had cars and turned over with glass and gas and everything else, and nothing got done until somebody bought the house. So, I, I really think we need an ordinance and be happy to work with the ordinance committee to get things cleaned up that really are an ISO more off, quicker, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I'll speak to that, we, we've had other properties that we've had that happen to, and unfortunately, how we choose to live is not how others choose to live, and so um, it is a quite strict criteria, and we've, in the three years I've been here, we've been working with them and our attorneys, so again, like I may not wanna live that way, and you may not, but that, she loved her home, and she loved her property and her belongings, like, we have six other places in town, so it's really it's a tough call to, to displace someone from their home, so, um, we're, we're doing our best, but I mean, people who have stuff in their yard, again, like, we may not like it, but that's they're, they're, they are allowed to live that way, and the law is very strict of what we can and can't do, unfortunately. Um, I'm gonna make mention, uh, the fire chief got called out onto a call, and so according to this ordinance, um, or the order, actually, I'm gonna read that, the fire chief also testified, I'm speaking on behalf of him, that this, um, building does meet the statutory criteria of a dangerous building, and that in an event, um, emergency workers are not going to enter the building, so, um, section nine of this, um, I just spoke with the chief, and this is, uh, on his behalf.
Anything else, yes.
Is anybody allowed in the building now?
No.
Well, this weekend I went by, and there was a guy cleaning out the vehicles, not knowing whether he's gonna go inside the building, but there has been a guy there cleaning, so I just wanna make that known. So currently, what's, sorry. Currently, we, we, till we have the order to declare the dangerous building, we have not secured the building yet. Uh, once this order goes, and if we, order passes, our next agenda is to, to board up the two doors, uh, in the house. Right now, we have not secured the building, uh, because we haven't declared it a dangerous building yet.
Is that before the thirty days that they have to appeal, or do you have to wait that thirty days?
If this passes tonight, then we're gonna ask Public Works tomorrow to, to secure the, the I don't think we have to do all the windows and stuff, cause I don't think they can get into the windows, uh, without a huge lot of effort. But at least the doors, we'll ask them to plywood up so that they can't get in the building once we determine that it is a dangerous building. We just can't remove it for thirty days, if, uh, the town is, ends up doing it, we can't remove it for thirty days until the appeal process is gone through. So.
Anybody else like to mention anything?
So I live next door to the property, I'm at three eighty-three Bonnie Eagle Road, Thad Norcas is my name, um, it is infested with raccoons, um, porcupines, rats, every rodent you can imagine, I have them on film, a lot of those pictures are probably from me. Her defecating in her driveway, those are video or pictures of her doing it in the driveway was for me. Unacceptable, that's disgusting, it's a health violation, code violate, everything, you know, um, what is it, my realtor found that her name is not on the deed. That a David Walker is on the deed. So I don't know how you can sell a property if you're not on the deed. Now, I made an offer, and their exact response was, uh, we have no, uh, response to your offer. I don't know what that means, but so I would like to work with the town and get that cleaned up, it is an ISO, and a hazard, there's kids that live next door, so. Alright, thanks guys.
Thank you. Anything else? Is there any other comments on this?
I have a question. Are we doing any counsel now, or are we still out there?
This is a public hearing, so I was just, if there's no other public hearings, and there's no other notifications, I was just gonna close the public hearing. So, public hearing is closed, everybody in favor of closing the public hearing? We can talk about it at the order, cause there's other orders.
Oh, I know.
Okay, public hearings closed for, all favor of closing public hearing? Uh, I think it's unanimous.
Okay.
Do it. Um, on to thirty-six twenty-five for Percy's Table.
Yep, application submitted by Michael Duncan, Dunkinson, Percy's Table Incorporated, doing business as Percy's Table located at one eleven Osiphe Trail East for the renewal of an on-premises beer-only restaurant license, order that the application submitted by Michael Duncan Dunkinson Percy's Table Incorporated, doing business as Percy's Table located at one eleven Osiphe Trail East for renewal of an on-premises beer-only restaurant license is approved by council to expire as determined by the main division of liquor licensing enforcement.
Anybody here like to talk about Percy's Table? Seeing none, close the public hearings and roll call on this one.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Thank you. Committee reports, and, um, we'll start down, uh, with Mr. Deacon this evening for your committee reports.
Nothing to report.
Uh, Economic Development Committee met. Yeah, we met. Well, we talked about the Finance Committee?
Sure thing.
Finance Committee met just before this meeting, um, we are right on track with spending um, and revenue.
Um, the ordinance committee has not yet met this, um, month, but we have one coming up next week.
Mm-hmm. Mr. Gardner?
Uh, Personnel Committee has nothing to report. Uh, Appointments Committee, nothing yet, uh, we have, we just actually scheduled, uh, some interviews for, uh, we're gonna, uh, May thirteenth prior to next council meeting, so um, more to report next month.
Mr. Christie, any committee reports?
No reports. The chair is coming along.
Thank you. Um, the consent calendar.
Sure, uh, thirty seven, um, the consent calendar is going to be voted on collectively and read by pedal only. So thirty-seven dash twenty-five, confirmation of the town clerk's nomination of the chair for resignation appeals board, which is, uh, Jaclyn Dyer. Thirty-eight dash twenty-five, appointment of election warden, deputy election wardens and election ballot clerks, deputy and clerks to serve at the June ten twenty twenty-five elections. Thirty-nine dash twenty-five, establish voter registration hours prior to June ten twenty twenty-five election and notice of other election-related information, and forty dash twenty-five, countersign the main school administrative district number six warrants for their upcoming June ten twenty twenty-five elections.
Any discussion from the council?
No, sir.
Seeing none, uh, let's have a collective roll call on all the orders that were just listed, please.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
It's five yeses.
Finished business.
We have one thirty-four dash twenty-four, amendments to Standish Town Code, chapter one eighty-seven, licenses and permits. Um, this is the introduction out of committee on four eight twenty-five, um, as a substitute. So amendments to the Standish Town Code, chapter one eighty-seven, licenses and permits.
Motion to waive reading.
Second.
Okay, all favor wavering the reading? It's unanimous. Uh, this is some much-needed and long overdue, just deletions from the book, um, things that are either already looked at by state or not looked at at all, uh, so there's no need for, uh, undue wording and language in the, the code book.
I think one thing that we should just make mention of is we're streamlining the liquor license process, so if someone has come to the council for the prior five years, hasn't had any issues, when they come for year six beyond, they won't need, they can waive the public hearing, we won't have to have that.
Anybody else have a question, or?
Uh, just as a point of reverence too, Mary and I chat, and we usually check with Cumberland County to see if there has been any issues, so we make sure we cover all of our bases.
Great. Will you consider issues?
Uh, drunk driving, fighting, uh, illegal sales.
In that place, okay.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call, please.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
It's five yeses. Alright, so up next, we have twenty-one dash twenty-five amendments to the Standish Town Code, chapter one eighty-one, land use form-based code village districts on street parking, this is the first Chapter one eighty-one land use form-based code village districts on street parking. This is the first reading. The town of Standish hereby ordains that Chapter one eighty-one.
Motion to waive reading.
Second.
All favor wavering the reading? That is unanimous. Mr. Cross, would you like to just touch base?
This is talking about doing away with designated parking along in the town right of way for the town. You can still pull over and park on the side of the road. It doesn't prevent that. But designate spaces that are designated on local roads, it'll still be allowed on town avenue roads, which are for commercial lots, uh, when, when we're not there. The ideas of it is because of snow cleanup, uh, other liabilities, maintenance for the town. It's just changing the ordinance that currently allows it in that.
Trying to avoid the need for parking bans.
Yes.
Et cetera. Any discussion? Anything from the public? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Christie.
Yes.
Deacon.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
And Watson.
Yes.
Five yeses. All right, so we have twenty-two dash twenty-five amendments to Standish Town Code, Chapter one eighty-one, land use part one zoning, part three subdivision, part six growth management. Um, and there's housekeeping in several, several sections. Uh, this is the first reading. The town of Standish hereby ordains that Chapter one eighty-one.
Motion to waive reading.
Okay. Moved and seconded, all in favor? That's unanimous. Uh, so this is largely, um, just making sure all the different parts of the code align with each other. So if, we can have, daycare's here and daycare's there and not have any confusion. But Zach, if there's anything else you want to mention?
Um, no, that's correct. There's, there's some discrepancies between how we define adult daycares and child daycares and we just wanted to clean that up. So there's that and, um, also just cleaning up some stuff related to accessory dwelling units, um, in the ordinance as well. And as well as retaining walls, uh, we want people to be able to submit a plan to, to the CE, to the code officer just because we want to make sure people are meeting setbacks. That's, that's about it.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, any questions from the council and then questions from the public? Seeing none, let's have a roll call, please.
Yeah, Christie.
Yes.
Deacon.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
And Watson.
Yes.
It's five yeses. And we're moving along to thirty-four dash twenty-five. Uh, receive budget committee's recommendations for the FY twenty-six municipal operating budget. Uh, we received the recommendations at the April second, twenty twenty-five joint council meeting. Postponed voting on the budget committee recommendations until now, April eighth, twenty twenty-five. Whereas the FY twenty-six town of Standish municipal operating budget was forwarded by town council.
Second.
All favor wavering the reading? That's unanimous. Thank you. So at this time, we're gonna go over the recommendations and, um, just want to say one quick thing before we start that, um, I know the budget committee works hard on this. They put a lot of hours into looking at the budget, coming up with these recommendations. And also there's been some turmoil, um, this year with some, um, some of the process. So I just want to make sure we're all respectful. We do our due diligence as a council to look at the recommendations and put our, uh, get our input in. And, um, this is all done quickly, but also effi- efficiently and that we remember that these are taxpayer dollars that we're working with here. And just go from there. So I'll open it up to.
Night. Can I ask a question? Scott, on page one of our budget book, when we add, when the number was updated for the MSAD six proposed budget to fourteen million fifty-two thousand four hundred, what did that change the mill rate to?
The mill rate is now currently twelve dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Thank you.
Just gonna work through these recommendations, um, as they're laid out before us, um, with their recommendation, um, paper that they sent us and gave us last time. But what I'd like to do first is, um, receive the budget and accept the budget with, um, all the parts that they are not changing. So we'll do that first and then look at all the recommendations. So I'll make a motion that we receive the budget committee, budget recommendations that not, weren't changed.
I'll second that.
Adopting. So we are adopting the budget parts that were not, had no recommendations from the budget committee.
Leave it as is.
Leave it as it is, exactly. So it's been moved, seconded, uh, all in favor of adopting or accepting the budget? And then we'll talk about the recommendations afterwards. Does that make sense?
Hands or roll call?
Oh, oh, just a hands.
Okay.
Very good. unanimous. So at this time, we'll go through the recommendations, starting with, the first one that I see is the fuel and lubricants that are on page twenty-four. And the budget committee recommendation is to increase this one thousand dollars from fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred dollars because it, they brought on, uh, new folks and just to keep them from going over every year.
And I think that recommendation is in line with what we were looking at in the finance committee today as, as what they've spent year-to-date.
That would basically make it so it's not a negative. It's, they'll be within budget. Any, any other council questions or?
Yeah, make it what now?
This is under code enforcement, which starts on page seventeen.
I'm looking at their recommendation.
Not on page. It's the next page. There, from the bottom.
Under the fuels and lubricants, the, again, the budget committee recommendations to move it up to twenty-five hundred dollars. Which is about what they're spending right now when we looked at in the finance committee meeting. It's a twenty-five hundred dollars. So essentially, this would make it so they're not going over budget.
I would just ask why they're not asked, why didn't they ask for that in the first place? If they don't need it, then if they thought they only needed fifteen hundred or a thousand, yeah, fifteen hundred.
I think all the staff will try and present something that is lower. If he wants to speak on it, he's here. I'll let him, I'll answer a question.
Is it, is it for him or John?
This is for JP under code enforcement.
So that item, um, we had a shared care with assessing. Assessing has the vehicle now. That was what the old budget was listed for, for the fuels and lubricants and stuff for the maintenance of that. The reason why we went over budget this year and I didn't think about putting it in was because I got a new vehicle from county. But to get it road-ready for us, we had to spend almost fourteen hundred dollars, uh, on, to get it road-ready to use on a daily basis. So that's why it was not part of the budget because I honestly think about it. But also the reason why we were over is because I wasn't expecting to spend fourteen hundred dollars on a vehicle that wasn't in the budget last year.
So this year, you're expecting to spend twenty-five hundred?
I honestly don't know what fuel costs are gonna be for the new, I went from a Ford Escape to a Chevy Tahoe, so fuel expenses. And maintenance, I, this will be the first year we've had it, uh, in our budget. But I have no idea what oil changes are gonna be for that different-sized motor.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's why there's the discrepancy of what was in there and what wasn't asked for.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Moving on, seeing none, then I'll make the motion that we adopt or accept this recommendation to move it to twenty-five hundred dollars from the fifteen hundred. Moved and seconded, all in favor of that adoption. It's unanimous. The next one, I see, is under, I believe, general administration, um, with the change to the new equipment. General administration contractual under the new equipment, which is page forty-one. Budget committee, Joe, if I'm getting these page numbers wrong, let me know. Uh, so, page thirty-three, okay. That they reduced the grant matching funds from fifteen thousand to eight thousand. So they're recommending to reduce the grant matching funds from fifteen thousand to eight thousand. There.
What does those grant matching funds go towards?
That's the thing, we never know. We just, we're, we have a grant opportunity at, we just got one at, uh, from the state that gave us concrete pylons. We have another one that we could fix the fishing, fishing pier. But we never know, like, they come out sporadically by the state or whatever and sometimes we have to match it financially or in kind or, and so we really never know. We have no idea what's coming and what, what the grant says. I mean, I know John and, and Zach can speak to it, but I mean, that's the gist of it. And if we don't have money to match it, then.
We don't get the grant.
Exactly.
There. Just for full disclosure, there's also a note from the budget committee that there is thirty-five thousand dollars in the fund as of January of twenty twenty-five. The grant matching fund has twenty-seven thousand two hundred fifteen dollars currently in it. So adding the eight thousand will bring the, this budget line into the reserve draft policy maximum amount. Instead of going over the draft maximum amount.
Are there any grants in the queue at the moment?
Scott? Zach?
I mean, there's a grant.
Go up there. Thank you.
There's always grants that we're applying for. Um, for example, there's a grant out now for FEMA with the fire chief that, um, if we do get, we'll wipe out that twenty-seven thousand. But I just don't know at this point, you know, because of the federal, what's happening at the federal level, I don't know what's happening with FEMA and the grant. So I can't really tell you, but, you know, we're gonna look at another grant and there's always like usually twenty-five percent match required to these grants. So, um, yeah, it's, it's hard to tell.
All right.
Yeah, Mr. Deacon?
Would we be able to, if there's a potential for that large amount to be used, would we be able to add to the matching funds at a later time in any way to? It seems, uh, penny wise, pound foolish to underfund something like that that does save us money, uh, by being able to match grants. And if, you know, would, an historical amount may not need to change, but inflation does happen. And so, uh, costs of lots of things go up and maybe our grant matching fund ought to be adjusted somewhat as well to reflect the fact that we don't want to miss out on opportunities that could very significantly benefit the town. I'm not sure what dollar amount, uh, but if we end up using all of that twenty-seven for just a single grant, I might, even doubling the matching funds might be more appropriate, but I'm not sure how others feel about this. But it seems like a, a sad way to miss out on opportunities if we don't properly fund that.
So what happens if we come to the beginning of the year and the balance in the accounts twenty-seven, two fifteen and the council has allocated fifteen thousand, where does that seven thousand go if you can't exceed?
Uh, it would go into the reserve. Well, it would stay in, in the budget for the year and then if it wasn't spent, it would go into the reserve. So you'd have fifteen in the budget plus another twenty-seven in the reserve.
So.
It could be used.
So you'd have the whole budget year to use that fifteen?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I can speak on something that I've had, had matching funds for last year, but didn't get it. But climate change grants, we tried to get it from Molton Hill to try to, the engineering money we could use as that got denied, but we still were required to have that matching fund. So we are putting in for stuff, but it's just, I'm sorry, us being named to get it.
Now, do you have a question? Was your hand up?
Yeah, um, but I got a different question now. Um, so what you're saying is that, um, when you put in for a grant, you have to show that you have that money locked up before you can even apply for it?
Correct.
And so if we get that grant and you want to go for a grant, something's gotta give. Right? You won't be able to put in for it, right?
You gotta show that you have the funds.
Okay.
As part of the grant.
Is that for all grants or is that just certain grants?
Uh, so, the ones that we have put in for recently is that kind. Some, some are in kind though. You know, it's not, everyone is a matching.
Yeah.
Money-wise.
Okay.
How much do we have in grants right now? Looking for? Well, Rob, in a, in a, in a
How much would you say? I mean, we just did a review and my review and the past three years, the town's gotten almost a million dollars in grant money. So, I mean, I agree. I think it's short-sighted to limit it when we've gotten multiple. I mean, John and I just put in one now for the state, for MMA, for safety equipment.
I just, uh, I have a two hundred thousand dollar stream grant pending that hasn't been paid out to us yet as soon as we start the work.
But not all of those are matching funds.
Correct. Not all of those are matching funds. Usually they limit you depending on the size of the project. So like, design work, they usually cap it at seventy-five thousand. But they usually require you to have five percent or ten percent matching funds for that. Cause it's usually something in kind that can't be matched, so.
Questions or discussion from the council?
I don't think we should reduce this. I think we should keep it at the fifteen thousand that we had originally.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the recommendation from the budget committee.
I'll second.
Uh, so all in favor of adopting the budget committee's recommendation?
Which would lower it to eight.
Correct. Seeing none. So that recommendation fails. Okay? The next one would be under the new equipment, which is page forty-one. They're recommending that we increase this to three thousand dollars to account for, oh, to forty-five hundred dollars. And the three thousand dollars is basically reallocating where the money comes from to purchase the chairs for the town council chamber from this fund rather than from, uh, the town council budget. That makes sense. They just want the funds for the chairs to come from this account rather than the town council fund.
What's the difference?
What purpose? I'm just wondering, like, what is, if we're gonna spend it, like?
I have another question. So if we were buying equipment, chairs, file cabinets for any place else in the building, would it come out of, would it be in this budget?
Yes, Scott's saying.
Yeah.
Yes.
Probably.
Equipment. So I think it was for a manner of accounting for them, of wanting to see the chairs come out of something that's not a contingency fund for the town council. That should be used for contingency things. Things that we don't see coming.
For, if I may, so a contingency fund for the council. So if the town needed funds for some other purpose, the council contingency funds could be used for that. So that if we needed a matching grant of thirty thousand and didn't have it otherwise available, the council contingency fund could be drawn upon to help, help. So that would be a good thing not to use the council contingency fund.
The, the money in here, the, the money is coming from the contingency fund or it's coming out of that budget line for the contingency fund if they, we approve this. So make the contingency fund still, let's say, at fifteen thousand, I believe, rather than twenty-eight thousand to buy the chairs and laptops. So we're not losing contingency funding, we're just realigning where the funds, the funds are coming from.
Right. So I would, I would say realigning it is good because I'd like to suggest keeping it, the council contingency fund untouched is a good idea. Gives us leeway to do lots of things as a community that come out, come along the way.
Any other discussion? Would you like to make that a motion then?
I, I, I will move that we, uh, leave the council contingency funds untouched and draw the funds for these items from.
The, just as a point of order, I think if you want to keep this, you would want to. The, just as a point of order, I think if you wanna keep this, you would wanna make a motion that we adopt this recommendation.
Okay, so I will move that we adopt the recommendation not to use the council contingency funds.
Second. All in favor of adopting that?
Is there a second to the motion?
There was a second by Mr. Christie. That is all in favor.
Does that mean we adopt its sister one automatically?
I think it, we'll have to look at that when we get there. Uh, the next one is the cable television. Their recommended change is to go increase that ten thousand five hundred dollars, um, from eighteen thousand five hundred to twenty-nine thousand. And that is to therefore put the iPads or laptops, whatever is chosen into the cable television budget line instead of the contingency fund.
Alright, I might have an unpopular opinion here, but I don't think we need new laptops. From what Scott just said with the, um, mill rate going up, it's gonna be high, at the moment, it's higher than it was last year. So with the new reassessed values, that means we're gonna put a bigger bump on people's taxes. And I think we should at least wait a year on that expense.
I agree with you that I'd rather not. I mean, I'm kinda old school for my young age and I kinda like having paper, sometimes easier to flip through paper than to try and flip through a computer screen or iPad screen. I can definitely see that it could have a great benefit and be useful, um, but I, I, I don't see the need to spend that money on it. Mr. Gardner?
Um, well, I mean, I guess the play devil's advocate, um, if you look at all the paper that we use throughout the year, um, saving on all of that is gonna pay off those laptops way before, uh, and, and not really hurt taxpayer money. We're actually sick, gonna save them money in the long run because every meeting is so much paper printed and wasted because I know right after here, most of it gets, you know, circular filed, right? Um, and just gets trashed or recycled. It's a, that's a lot of money just sitting on the stage, just tonight. Look at all the paper out here. And then that's every meeting for us, you know, like, just throwing it out there.
I have a, yeah, Mr. Deacon, then I'll have Steve come up.
So there's a reference to, uh, Windows ten and, uh, when you have computer equipment that has software that's not being supported, it's vulnerable to all kinds of hacks and it would seem, uh, foolish to keep old computers that are more subject to hack than something that's beating current standards. Windows ten doesn't, is not gonna get updates after October of this year, I believe, or something like that. You maybe can spend additional money to support them, but, uh, I don't think it's a good idea to keep outdated equipment that's gonna put the town in jeopardy. Uh, we already have a website. We know that we should move our website to, from an org to a dot gov to help protect us. There's lots of things in terms of digital security that we should attend to and I would, uh, suggest that not having the, uh, adequate modern equipment is being penny wise and pound foolish and that we ought to keep the expenditure.
I think, but just for clarification, I think the computers that are talking about here are actually staff computers that they're already budgeting to purchase, not, so I think the against was to why buy more computers when we're already looking to replace other computers? Not that the computers that we would get would be outdated.
That was not my suggestion, that we cut the seventeen thousand dollars for replacement of computers. My suggestion was that we not spend an additional ten thousand five hundred for new laptops just for the town counselors.
I see, okay, thank you. Any other, couldn't hear that down here, the voice was going that way.
I'm sorry, so my suggestion was there's, um, in the cable television budget, there are three li- there's the proposal to have three line items. One for maintenance of fifteen hundred, one for replacement of PCs for seventeen thousand. And then the suggestion of the budget committee was to move the town council laptops of ten thousand five hundred into that budget. When I said, I didn't think that we should spend the ten thousand five hundred, it was in relation to the town council laptops. I absolutely think we should replace the PCs that need to be done.
Thank you.
I think Mr. Nesbit had a-
I'll open up for you, yeah, come on up, Steve.
Nesbit, Budget Committee, thanks for letting me speak, just a little, the way I see the procedure. Um, the council passed the budget to us with the laptops in the operating budget. We're passing our recommendations back to you with the laptops in the budget. So if you were to take those laptops out, you're creating a new budget that technically we would have to review the budget again because it's a different budget. So the, the laptops are there. We didn't, we're not recommending getting rid of the laptops, we're just recommending what account that they're moving from. So they're in the budget for this year.
That was gonna be my question, actually.
So that's, that's how I kinda see the procedure going. You, you, you moved the budget to us with them in there, so they're kind of in there.
Then I was misinformed when we originally voted because I specifically asked that question, whether-
But that, that's how I see it.
We got another vote at this.
Yeah, it's a different procedure that I don't know. Thank you.
Clarification?
It could be reduced at town meeting if, if, if it wanted to, if you wanted to reduce it.
So at that meeting, we just make a note that we wanted to reduce that?
We can make a motion on the floor.
But this time, I think we have to make a motion to adopt this recommendation to move the budget forward and then down the road at the town meeting, we can make that motion at that time if we'd like to.
Second.
Well, at this time, we're talking about moving it from the, now, the council contingency fund-
To the cable television one?
Yes. Moving that forward or just accepting their recommendation?
Accepting, accepting the recommendation, correct.
I'll make that motion to accept it.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor of the motion? Unanimous? Uh, the next one, uh, was under the town council section, the salaries. Uh, they're rec- recommending that we decrease thirty-five hundred dollars, uh, to go from the fourteen thousand to the ten thousand five hundred, essentially keeping the town counselor, uh, stipend the same as in previous years instead of giving us a raise. Any discussion on that? Yes, Mr. Deacon?
There was a reference to having it come through the manager's budget. Does the manager have an opinion about that?
Scott and I had a discussion and Scott, you can summarize more eloquently than I, but-
I, I, I thought that it, if, it should come from the council versus coming through the manager's budget because the manager before, you know, puts forth what they feel their budget should be. And I don't know that it's appropriate for the town manager to be recommending the council, council increase. I think it's up to, that was my opinion.
Is there anything that if the council votes on its own stipend, is there anything, for example, with Congress and a lot of other public bodies, that you, uh, any change in salary or payment be in a future council or not those that are currently sitting? Is there anything about the time period when this would take effect? Would it take effect in a future council or what?
Yeah, it would take effect July first, so in the next fiscal year, it'll be a next, a new council. With, obviously, current counselors.
I hear you.
Any further discussion? So I'll make a motion that we adopt the recommendation from the budget committee.
Second.
All in favor of adopting that? Steve? So four, all opposed, be one. We go back, correct.
What was that?
Since the, the motion wasn't the majority, but the super majority of five, which we need for this project process, is gonna go back and have ten days to reassess.
Increase for salaries for here.
Thank you.
Uh, so the next one, owner's town council still would be the contingency fund. This is the sister one, basically, since we have already adopted the last two to take the stuff out of the contingency fund. Their recommendation is to decrease it to thirteen thousand five hundred to the fifteen thousand. Um, so this essentially we've already adopted, so this is just a, a point of order to say that we did it because we've already taken the money out and put it in other areas. So I make a motion that we adopt this recommendation to reduce the town council contingency fund to fifteen thousand.
Second.
All in favor? I think, Mr. Deacon? Okay, opposed? Okay, so that's gonna go back.
Send, send just this back or does it send the other ones back too?
Uh, just the ones that are not voted on with the full majority, super majority.
Right, so just this, right?
Uh, that, down to the planning, um, their recommendation was to increase five thousand seven hundred fifty. Uh, this is to give the planning board members a, um, increase in their stipend to twelve thousand fifty per year per member. The reasoning behind that is essentially they go to sidewalks, they have a lot of meetings, they have a lot of paperwork to sift through, spending their gas money to go to the sidewalks, et cetera. You know, so that's their, they're in favor for that raise of the planning board stipends.
I think they do deserve, absolutely deserve a raise. They've been working really hard and I expect with the growth in town, they're gonna be working, continue to work hard.
Any other discussion?
Well, um, I, I agree. I, I agree, they, they deserve a raise and everything, but to, to just say what was said before is that town council doesn't, shouldn't have a raise because, you know, you do this because you ran for it. The same thing as a budget, as a planning board member, right? I know they do a lot more, they go out and do a lot of site visits, they do all that stuff. Um, but I mean, I, I feel it's kind of the, the same thing, but you, so you're saying that one doesn't deserve one and one does. Um, and I'm not, I would, I'm definitely voting to increase it, not saying that, I'm just, you know, pointing out the fact that, you know, things have been said like that, so.
Alright, but this raise makes them, they get the same amount of pay as we would. And so that's why I think it's appropriate.
Yeah, RealStig was still two hundred fifty dollars less per year, so. Mr. Deacon?
What's the reasoning to have the counselor budget come from the manager but not this salary? I mean, why the difference? If we're gonna have some salary that should go through the manager, why not these salaries?
I think it also says here that as previously stated, under the town council stipend, it would benefit to have this come through the manager's budget.
So why would it be beneficial to have the, uh, these salaries come through the manager as well?
I would imagine for the same reason that Scott already stated, that it'd probably be better for, you know, the town council to adjust it rather than the town manager. I, I say, I think it's the same reasoning. Yes, Steve?
Obviously from this, it was a four to two vote, so it was a split vote on this. It wasn't a unanimous thing. And I think when I, I wrote up some of these for and against reasonings, when I said through the manager's budget, um, just from my experience that when the personnel committee met, that their, the, uh, counselors needed to give the manager direction on the COLA amount so that the manager could put that in the budget. That if the, uh, council felt that they needed to increase their stipend, they could give that direction to the manager at that time to put it in the manager's budget. So that's where I felt that direction could come from. It wouldn't come directly from the manager. But maybe when the counselors met at that meeting, they felt that they wanted to increase the stipend and they were all in agreement that that direction can come and be put into the manager's budget. So that's, that's where I felt that was coming from, not from the manager himself.
And it wasn't discussed, but I feel like going forward, it could be an opportunity to have that discussion.
So in that way, the managers are discuss, the counselors are discussing it together at that point in time, so. But again, for the planning board, it was not a unanimous decision.
Oh, and I-
You know, in, in this race, it was-
Right, you just hear what I'm saying, like, I was just-
Oh, yeah, I know, I, I completely agree with what you're saying.
Yeah.
Completely agree.
Thank you.
May I ask, uh, has the planning board members had an opportunity to comment on whether they feel this is necessary, appropriate, deserved or otherwise?
I don't know about this year. I know past years, there've been planning board members that maybe asked for a raise or thought that there was a need for a raise. Any more discussion on this? I'll make a motion that we accept the planning board, the budget committee's recommendation for the, the, the raise of two, eight, of eight thousand seven, no, sorry, of five thousand seven hundred fifty dollars.
Second.
All in favor? That's unanimous. Uh, same section with the planning board, under the training section, they're looking to reduce or decrease by twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, from five thousand dollars to twenty-five hundred dollars. They're saying that their budget in the past shows their training has not exceeded twenty-five hundred dollars and there's no specific training programs listed as, are listed in other departments. Any discussion?
They're asking for-
The, in the budget was five thousand, they're asking to reduce that to twenty-five hundred.
That's a good move on that, but. Who's in, who's in charge of setting up training? Um, like, I guess that's a question for you, like-
Probably either Zach or Scott.
Scott, do you like, do you anticipate, how much training do you anticipate this year and is that a appropriate number?
It's, it's a lot, it's a, it's a lot to reduce that by half. I understand where they're coming from. Um, it hasn't, it wasn't spent this year because we just couldn't make it to the conferences that we usually go to. I, I can see, I can see you deciding to cut this down. I, I would, you know, as the, as the director of the department, you know, I, I, I really don't want it to see, go, go to less than four, really, but again, that's your decision and so, yeah.
You, so you do see training this year?
Yeah, no, we do. You know, and that money, I don't know what it was showing, what was it showing now, Scott, as spent? Do you know? No. I think it's, I think we're around twenty-five hundred right now, so there's still some of the year left. I think we'll get that to around thirty. Well, it'll go over three because there's still some stuff we do through MMA. So it, it's a lot to reduce it by twenty-five hundred, but again, it's your decision.
Like a lot of my staff too, there's usually an annual conference and sometimes they can't go or some staff go every other year. So it's, again, it's their availability and what the conference is and where it is too matters.
I was just wondering what conferences they didn't get to go to last year.
Uh, there's, there's a, um, the Northern New England Planning Association puts on a conference every year that we usually do make it to. Um, and we just couldn't make it to Vermont last year at that time, um, but we'll make it this year, uh, in the fall. It's always in the fall.
How much does that cost?
For both of us, um, you know, it's a three day thing, so there's, there's hotel and travel involved. I-
Quite a bit.
It'll be two thousand at least.
Um, I'm looking at the finance committee report from today's meeting. Um, it's, so we're talking about the planning department training.
Correct.
Um, it says that five thousand's been budgeted and, um, there's still available in that budget about forty-two hundred dollars. So are there trainings that you expect in the next few months?
We also worked with county and got, um, a free course, uh, through a grant ironically and Zach's been going to that every Wednesday. So that's taking up a lot of his time. So that's, this is an unusual class that we had to apply for and only a few, twelve people got in throughout Cumberland County-ish.
That should be. I, 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 I think when that, when that budget comes out in January, maybe, I definitely spent, I've definitely spent money since, since that, since that came out in January. I expect it to be closer.
I'm looking at this month's report, this is through the end of March.
March?
Yeah.
I really.
You think there's more?
I'd have to go back and look. I, I have to go back and look, Scott. I think I, I thought there was, I thought there was a lot more gone. But that was, I mean, these, these usually come, you know, as, as things come up too, you know, MMA doesn't put on the same things every year. So again, I can see, you know, if, if, if you did want to reduce it a little bit, I mean, I'm not, you know, I, I, I can see that, but unfortunately, we didn't make it to the major conferences this year, which would choose up quite a bit of it.
Further discussion from the council? Mr. Gardner?
Um, so I'm just making sure we do this right, like, because do we have to just either accept or deny their proposal, or do, can we suggest that we not, uh, decrease it as much? Can we add another number? Like to four thousand or something like that, or, or do we have to just yea or nay?
Yeah, it's a yea or nay of this topic. I was just wondering.
So it's either twenty five hundred as recommended or five thousand as we had, we had put in the budget?
Any, any further discussion? Okay, uh, I'll make a, a motion that we accept the budget committee's recommendation to reduce it to twenty five hundred.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Go to the law enforcement. With their recommendation from the budget committee to, uh, delay the purchase of car four fifty four until, uh, fiscal year twenty seven.
The, um, sheriff's office gave us a handout and it listed the five cars. Just so I'm reading this correctly, when it says replace two thousand twenty five, does that mean it was in last year's budget and that we're looking at the two thousand twenty six cars that need to be replaced?
So they, the, when the budget passes, they order them in July, so in theory, this, I believe, in July, it would, it would, they would, or they would place the order for it.
Do we have any cars on order now?
I believe there is one, but I'm not, I'm not sure. Perhaps it's for that, but I would have to ask Gary. I'm not sure. I know that, I know that they don't order them until the budget passes and then once they order it, it takes about a year to get it and get it fit. So a, as a minimum, and I just, I had spoken, said last, like, these, these are not exact. There's also idle hours, so.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I'm just trying to figure out what we ordered last year and what.
So in theory, I mean, if you look at this, and I could, I could text him, I don't know how fast they're answering me, but I mean, there says three to replace in twenty twenty five, so I don't know. Are we ordering three last year? Well, no, we can't. I think it's ordering and, and.
So are there any new ones that are gonna come online that were ordered last year, I guess my question is?
I know that, I don't know.
I just spoke to the county mechanic today. He said he's waiting on twelve cars to come in in the next couple of weeks, so I'm, I would assume probably there's one car for Standish in there. I don't know that for sure, but he said the twelve cars should be showing up and then they go to Massachusetts to be outfitted and there's a waiting line for that.
That, that does make sense because we have eight deputies right now and there's not eight cruisers here, so that does make sense. So I would imagine these three that say replace twenty twenty five, they would get ordered in July twenty twenty five for the following. And so that, since there's not, there's three others not on here.
There was a cruiser in last year's budget.
Okay.
Three, yes.
Okay, so those would replace what was, is marked on here as twenty twenty five then?
Mm-hmm.
So recent news reports indicate car prices should be increasing substantially. Uh, if we don't buy this now, are we shooting ourselves in the foot for just much higher costs in the future? And maybe it's prudent to go ahead with the purchase as we have here as opposed to deferring it and have significantly higher costs in the future.
Haven't seen vehicle prices go down.
Yes. Um, you know, Standish is a big town. Um, and our deputies need to have up-to-date reliable equipment and I'd be concerned that, uh, we not have enough adequate equipment for them. I mean, there's all kinds of questions you could ask. Are these cruises totally made with US parts or not? I don't, who knows? Uh, that, that any of those questions, I mean, there could be a lot of questions to ask, but it's fair, I'm, I, I would say that, uh, not buying the cruiser now would likely result in a much higher cost in the future.
Further discussion? I'll make a motion that we.
The reason that this was recommended is, yes, they, they get replaced when they're damaged or they time out. We were told they time out after five years or a hundred and twenty thousand miles, whichever comes last. This, this vehicle four fifty four has approximately seventy five thousand miles on it and it is a twenty twenty one. That means it's about sixteen to seventeen thousand miles a, a year, which kinda tells me it's not a pool car. It's sitting in someone's driveway, so it's probably not damaged. It's still in really good shape. So this car, number four fifty four, probably has another three years on it before it hits that mileage, which is whichever comes last.
I said last, so I said that already. That was my mistake. I, I, it wasn't, it wasn't an exact science and I sent this out after from the sheriff's office.
So the sheriff's office says whichever comes first, whichever comes last?
They, they were not clear about it. The mechanic is out with cancer, so I could not get a clear answer because I spoke to him in the beginning and now because he's out with cancer, I, I was not sure, but.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough. So that would be something that we could clarify for, for next year. But that, that notwithstanding, the mileage on this car tells me that it's not being driven a lot and I know squad cars can be driven hard if they're out in the field. But this car appears to be a, a sheriff's, a personnel car that sits in the driveway and it's got some good time left on it. You start replacing these vehicles before they're halfway ready to go and we're just adding on and adding on and adding on when it's got miles on it. I know they come back to the county, but if we've got three years, two, three years left in this vehicle, why replace it now? Car prices are never gonna go down. But why would you add on now, two years before you may have to? That's what I'm saying. If we can get two more years out of a life of a car for the taxpayers, then is it something that we could try with one vehicle and see what happens? Because last year, we've got three of them. This year, we got two of them. I have eight on my sheet. I have eight, eight cars on my sheet. Three that were set for replacement twenty twenty five, two for this year. And then the next three are coming up next year, next year and the year after. So, I mean, if we can extend the life a little bit, but I can't get a, I can't get a hold of, like, the actual documentation that says this is the policy first or last, or maybe we need to change the policy. I know it's not standard policy, but that's why it's on there.
I'm just gonna speak a little on my little coun- uh, county experience. So as a patrol deputy, uh, it's not just personnel. These are patrol deputies in the town using the vehicles. Uh, and in average year, I would drive thirty to forty thousand miles per year in, in that. Because when we work outside of that and overtime, we use the car outside of Standish, so it's just not like Standish miles. It's an average of thirty to forty thousand miles. Um, the cars, so if you look at it, by the time it gets ordered, if we wait at July, so next, it'd be, have a hundred, if we go on the high end, a hundred and ten thousand miles, if we went to forty thousand. If you waited, so the year for that car to come in is a hundred and fifty thousand miles. I think that's why they're trying just to be ahead and a little bit proactive towards it. I'm just, like I said, I'm speaking from my county experience, my past employment of how it works. Um, if you have any questions, I mean, uh, to that, but that's.
Thank you.
There's no other discussion. I'll make a motion to accept the budget committee's recommendation.
And accepting would, uh, not purchase the car?
Correct.
Point of order, I think a little more info, information is necessary. Haven't worked, uh, for fourteen years. Uh, there's been cars that we've received from the sheriff's department. They sit up there and they're out in the town of Standish and other places. And I know of two vehicles right now that are, are dead. They, they belong in the junkyard. And we get that all the time. Uh, they go over the, what was it, a hundred thousand miles, I think, or something. And they usually, on one, one, we get a, a car that we've used. It's got maybe seventy five to eighty five. But one thing, there's, I know there's one up there that's been sitting, uh, because they can't get parts for it, things like that. And I don't serve in the thing again, but, uh, I've spent my time doing that, but I've been on the road a lot.
Yep, Mr. Gardner?
Can I just get clarification on, um, if we order this car, it would be ordered in July?
The county orders it, it's not the town.
Would they order it in, say, July or so, but we won't, the county won't see it probably in, for another six, a year?
Yes.
So, because I was all for it, like, saying, like, yeah, that makes sense. This, I was looking at the mileage, like, I'm with her, like, seventy five thousand miles is like real low on a vehicle, but that makes sense if we're gonna add a year's worth of mileage, we're looking at thirty five thousand most likely for, uh, for a, an officer. Now we are pushing that a hundred and twenty, you know, a hundred and ten thousand miles, so, um. Alright, I just, that's, I just want clarification. Thank you.
Mr. Deacon's motion in a second? Anybody in favor of accepting this? Seeing none, all opposed? Chris, are you abstaining?
I'm clear. I'm abstaining, whatever the word is. I don't wanna get myself in trouble.
That motion failed to go back for review. Um, the next one was the Public Works. Um, under the contractual section, uh, budget committee is recommending, uh, to reduce by forty thousand um, to go from one hundred forty nine hundred to one hundred thousand nine hundred. Um, and that's to reduce, uh, in engineering services. Questions? Mr. Deacon?
Uh, with a lot of floods and, uh, various things happening, are we going to use, is there ex- expectation? I mean, you know, we've had to replace culverts. I don't know if there's engineering services related to that. Uh, because of, uh, flooding and climate issues, can we expect that engineering services ought to be increasing because of unexpected weather events?
So last year, I, I provided a memo to the last meeting. I'm just saying, uh, the, my engineering request last year was seventy five thousand. It was reduced to sixty five. I have currently roughly, I believe it's about nine thousand left, right, Scott? I'm doing this from memory. Um, in that, so my guess is that, that line will go over this year because of the reduction. Uh, things that come up like, uh, uh, Middle Road Culvert had to be paid for because it wasn't a bonded, uh, thing. Um, we're looking at moving the Public Works future facility to the Moody Road Lot. Um, there's only eleven thousand dollars left in that bond. Uh, we use it for, uh, engineering of other items that come up. We also use it for operating, so when subdivisions inspections go through, we use it in the operating. We do get reimbursed by that, by the developer, but we need the operating money to pay for that, uh, services. Um, in the reserve account, uh, they talked about cutting it because of the amount that was in the reserve account. Uh, it shows fifty six thousand, but in last year's budget, I had requested sixty thousand in capital from Olton's Hill, but they made a re- a request to use thirty thousand from reserves, so technically, there's only twenty six thousand dollars in reserve with a future goal of a hundred thousand. And like I said, I'm expecting to go over in that line this year at the sixty five thousand. I still try to keep it at a reasonable request. I mean, we have three months left. Nine thousand dollars might be over a little, but I was just trying to keep it more reasonable instead of asking for the seventy five uh, that had been requested for the year past.
Further discussion from the council? Seeing, uh, none, then I'll make a motion that we accept the budget committee's recommendation for the reduction. Favor? Second?
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay. Moving second in, is all in favor? All opposed? Uh, next one is Parks and Rec. Uh, the budget committee made a recommendation to, in the contractual section, to reduce, um, by five thousand dollars, uh, to make the new budget line four, the seven thousand five hundred. Uh, and that's because that line items for tree removal and the Park and Recs already has now a licensed arborist on staff. Uh, so they didn't see the need to have that extra money for tree removal since there's a licensed arborist there.
I don't have any skin in it, but just so you know, and John can clarify, I wanna say Monday, we still had big projects and had to hire a tree guy and they went out together. So just because we have an arborist doesn't mean that he can tackle all of the projects we have. Was it Monday or last week they?
So Greg, Greg assists. So when we hire, uh, Colonial Tree Services, who's who we use for the town, it comes with a truck and the arborist in the bucket, because it is a larger truck. But Greg also assists with the roping and doing that stuff for the much larger trees, because we need the larger vehicle to be able to do the larger trees.
Discussion from the council?
Yeah, I would just say, uh, we have one arborist and you would be expecting that person to work alone. And sometimes tree cutting can be very dangerous and having a team allows for better safety, would you say?
Uh, so he works with the Public Works crew. He's not by himself when he's doing that work or anything. And anything like large tree arborists, uh, like I said, usually we're still using Colonial because we need the larger bucket truck type of deal. But we are looking to purchase the gear to have them do more of the fine to, uh, trimming around houses. Sometimes homeowners, uh, like to know that an arborist is trimming around their house and stuff, so that's something that, like, Greg will be doing.
I see. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, I'll make a motion that we accept the budget committee's recommendation for the reduction to forty seven thousand five hundred.
Second.
Second in, all in favor? Uh, seeing none, all opposed? Abstain, oppose?
Abstain.
Abstained?
I've, I've, I've asked for four years to have two trees, oak trees, that are about a hundred years old and ready to fall down. And, uh, I just don't wanna get involved in that. So I'm not gonna cut the tree down and I'm not gonna hire a UO.
And if that motion fails. Uh, next one will go to donations, cemeteries. Um, budget committee is requesting that we reduce Maple Cemetery from seven hundred to five hundred, so a reduction of two hundred dollars. Any discussion? The five hundred dollars is consistent with the past years. Discussion, no discussion, then I'll make a motion that we accept the budget committee's recommendation.
Second.
Moving second and all in favor of that? That's unanimous. Uh, next one is in provider agencies. Um, they have several recommendations. The first one is for Opportunity Alliance. They wanna reduce, uh, three thousand dollars to fifteen hundred dollars. That, again, aligns us more with the previous year's donations. Discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll make a motion that we accept the budget committee's recommendation to reduce by fifteen hundred dollars for donation amount of fifteen hundred dollars.
Second.
Moving second and all in favor of the recommendation? That is unanimous. Uh, next one is through these doors. They make a recommendation, uh, to reduce it, um, from twenty five hundred to twelve thousand five hundred. Um, I guess previous years, it's been five hundred, but there was a, a motion made last year to, to raise it, so they wanna bring it back down to twelve thousand, sorry, one thousand two hundred fifty dollars. Discussion?
Uh, remind me Through These Doors?
They are domestic violence.
What I thought, yeah.
What was that?
The Through These Doors Organization, they want to reduce to one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And John asked what they do, the organization does is domestic violence. And use. Yes.
So last year, they received two thousand five hundred, is that right?
Correct. Mr. Deacon?
Domestic violence is severely under-reported. Uh, Standish has a, has had a strong response and should continue having a strong response. I'm concerned that underfunding this could severely damage many families and individuals, uh, considering how severely under-reported domestic violence is. I would say that this is money well-spent to help make our society much better and we ought to support this.
I'll just also note here, just reading this more fully, uh, it says that dropping the amount brings, we're dropping it to twelve, that one thousand two hundred and fifty brings the amount closer in line to other towns. Some other towns much larger than ours are donating to them. Discussion needed? I will make a motion then that we accept this, uh, Budget Committee recommendation for the reduction to one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Moving second in, all in favor? All opposed? That motion fails. Uh, the next one would be the reduction for the Fuller House, Senator Power Housing. Uh, reducing that from five thousand that they requested and we grew to the thirty-five hundred dollars. Is there?
I just wanted to clarify that, uh, it says here that, uh, this is the first donation, uh, to them. And during the meeting, there, it was said that it was the first donation and stuff like that, but that was wrong. It actually came out during the meeting later on. I don't know if you remember that, that we have donated to them in prior years, um, in the amount of five thousand dollars. Um, so that's the amount, th- why they asked for it again. I, I, I'm guessing, I'm imagining, cause they, that's what we gave them before. So I just wanna clarify that note.
There also is a separate in-kind donation for use of the transfer station.
I will add that they did call last year and ask for an in-kind donation, but we told them because they missed the donation process from the years before is why it was not last year as well.
Mr. Deacon?
Uh, the governor in the state has identified housing as a critical area affecting many, many people in the state, including Standish. Uh, it affects the recruitment of staff for our public schools and other public entities. Uh, we ought to do all we can to support housing initiatives. It's a critical area, uh, that affects people all over the state, but especially this area. And I would, I would, uh, say that is, uh, this is a unique agency doing unique things and we should support them.
Mr. Gardner?
Oh, to finish what I was, I, I was thinking too, um, is that, I just wanted to clarify that. Um, but I do think that in the things that are going on, economy and all that stuff, taxpayers' money and stuff like that, that it's not unreasonable to, to, at this time, you know, even though we have given them five thousand in the past, bring it down this year to maybe thirty-five, just, just to save, you know, our taxpayers some money. It is a great program. I think it's very, uh, commendable what they do and, and everything like that. They do a lot of good things. Um, and they could do a lot of good things with thirty-five hundred. Um, and it was, and then maybe, you know, maybe next year we can bring it back up. That's my opinion.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll make a motion that we accept the Budget Committee's recommendation to, for the reduction to thirty-five hundred dollars.
Second.
All in favor of the motion? All opposed? You were for it, right? So it's a three to two. So that motion fails. Uh, next one is miscellaneous agencies.
If I may, uh, maybe it's too late to suggest it for this year, but in the future, I would recommend that the, uh, Gorham, uh, library be removed from miscellaneous agencies and be put with, uh, the other libraries as a like group. And it's inappropriate to put them here. I think it maybe potentially disadvantages them, but all the libraries ought to be regrouped. Uh, recommendation for the future of, uh, not necessarily something we have to address now, but I would, uh, suggest that in the future that, uh, that it be regrouped with other libraries.
So, under miscellaneous agencies, they're recommending, recommending, uh, reduction by five thousand dollars. So going from forty-two thousand nine hundred to thirty-seven thousand nine hundred. So any discussion on that? Question down there? Yes.
What's the Hasty Fund?
That, I'll defer to Scott.
I believe the Hasty Fund was a donation from somebody left to the town money, uh, to, uh, for upkeep and maintenance of the Old Red Church. So it has, um, we, it has its own endowment, I guess you'd say, a tr- trust amount. And then the interest goes to it. I read the document. I'm no lawyer, but I didn't see that you couldn't use the trust for, for maintenance.
Deacon?
How much is in the total Hasty Fund endowment, you know, roughly?
I have it right here. Sixteen thousand eighty-six dollars and seventeen cents.
Okay. And how many such, are there other endowments like that that the town has, or is this unique?
There are a couple of others. I don't, I, I don't know them off the top of my head. I could, I could provide you a list.
And, and have we used the Hasty Fund ever before?
Uh, once, I think we used it.
Once? It meant making withdrawal from the Hasty Fund, I mean, I don't know how they keep the money. Are they in long-term CDs or, I mean, does it, are they gonna, is it gonna induce a penalty or?
No, no, it's just a statement savings.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gardner?
Um, yeah, I'm just kinda, so to clarify that, if I'm reading this right, it says, reduce it from twenty thousand to fifteen thousand. Budget Committee wants to explore the use of the Hasty Fund for five thousand to bring total to twenty thousand. But then it says against the twenty, the twenty thousand is justified and the Hasty Fund should not be touched?
Cause I disagree, doesn't.
The Budget Committee disagreed, so it was a split vote.
So they were just clarifying who was for and why.
Okay. Yeah, they, I, I mean, I'm just, yeah, can we hear from him? Cause I'm just a little confused and he does a great job explaining it, so.
It was a split vote. It was just listening to the donation meeting and that the Hasty Fund wasn't brought up. And it was kind of reminding everyone that there is a Hasty Fund for the Old Red Church.
Mm-hmm.
And there was some discussion about should the Old Red Church come for a donation since the Old Red Church was, is owned by the town? And maybe they shouldn't need to come for donation, maybe at other means. So it was really more of just to bring up that there's a Hasty Fund at the, and it's, it's at the back of the audit book, that you'll find it there.
Okay.
There's no description for it. It's just called the Hasty Fund. So, um, the Old Red Church needs the twenty thousand dollars. They should get the twenty thousand dollars. And I think, um, everyone on the Budget Committee feels that way. But it was just more of, don't forget there's a Hasty Fund, but there's not a lot of money in it. So you really don't wanna draw that down and not have anything there for them. Cause it doesn't make a lot of money each year. It probably makes like three hundred dollars if that, if, each year and.
Three hundred dollars?
An interest each year is what it makes. So taking five thousand is really gonna just draw it down to nothing. So. But they need, they need the twenty thousand. So.
Any further discussion from the council? I'll make a motion that we accept the Budget Committee's recommendation for the reduction by five thousand dollars and, um, possibly use the Hasty Fund.
Second?
Move to second and all in favor? Opposed? Okay, that motion fails. Uh, next is the, uh, General Administration. And that is recommending to reduce a major equipment reserve twenty-five thousand dollar budgeted to zero. Um, and we can see the reasoning there that there's still some money left in there and that additional twenty-five thousand dollars will bring it over the hundred thousand dollar maximum, you know, for that reserve fund.
And just to be clear, this is in the Capital Outlay Department for General Administration, not to be confused with the General Administration Department.
Couldn't hear that really down here.
From Scott. So they're saying this is not the General Admin Department. This is the General Admin Capital Outlay Section. Not the Ca- General Administration Department, which is vastly different. Questions?
Scott?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, Scott, can you just make mention? I know this building's got a lot of, in the twenty years we've had it, nothing has been done to it. So by reducing this, are we gonna just again short, short ourselves or? We need a roof, we need a heating system, we have been engineering, uh, being done. So I just.
We do have money in the bond for that, but we don't know if that's gonna be enough. And this helps with any other things that come up during, during the year that aren't budgeted for.
Just today, we had a, yesterday sprinkler head broke and so it flooded one of the back hallways. So I feel like there's always something going on here that happens.
I used the money this year, uh, almost nineteen thousand for traffic lights at twenty-five one thirteen from that account.
Mr. Deacon, you had a question or a comment?
A comment that, uh, there's a lot of uncertainty in, uh, uh, the way, uh, public entities are being funded at the state and local level. I think it's, would be unwise to curtail and short this fund considering the many things that could come up that would cause us to need it, uh, as expressed by the town employees. And I would support the full amount.
Further discussion? Mr. Chris, you?
I'm still solid.
Okay. I wanna make sure we're all good. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll make the motion that we accept the Budget Committee's recommendation to reduce this line to zero. All in favor?
I'll second.
Sorry, thank you. Move to second in, all in favor? All opposed? That one moves. Move forward. That is, I believe, uh, all the Budget Committee recommendations. So now we on the whole, we have to go, we'll have to go back ten days.
Yes, yep, for the items that are going back to the Budget Committee, you have ten days to meet with the Budget Committee.
Or do you wanna just schedule a meeting for, in ten days?
Yeah, that's what I. Yeah, I, I think you need to schedule a meeting.
So what would that be? Marrying in ten days from?
We're if we meet in ten days.
In ten days or before ten, anytime before?
Has to be after the ten days.
I can see eighteenth, Mary, I counted it.
In ten days.
In ten days.
Yeah, so it could be earlier.
Correct.
Okay, I'm be out of state from the seventeenth on, so let everybody know.
You want to set a date now? Is that the, the best procedure?
I can look at the calendar and say whatever days are available. We just need to count what days are, uh, it used to be.
Yeah, ten days. Within ten days.
Within?
No more than ten days.
Yeah, within the ten days.
It could be in two, three days, right?
Correct.
Saturday morning or. Whatever.